Good morning, we'll call the meeting to order for the day. First item on our agenda is approval of today's agenda.
So.
Motion in a second, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All the same side. Citizens to be heard, any citizens that would like to be heard on any item that is not on today's agenda. Hearing on employee recognition. Colleen Eck, Administrative Assistant, Miami, Missouri. Morning. Presented in grateful recognition of 20 years of outstanding and dedicated service to Clay County United Citizens. Thank you. David Johnson. Morning Dave. Presented in grateful recognition of 20 years of outstanding and dedicated service to Clay County United Citizens. Okay, approved payment of bills and vouchers. Motion in a second, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same side, motion carries. Okay, annual report to Clay County Historical and Cultural Society. Morning.
Good morning. Good morning, thank you for letting me come in and share the good news. It's been awhile since I've been here and I thought, hey, I need to report in once in awhile. So, first of all, thank you so much to the county commission for the support of the Historical and Cultural Society of Clay County. We are eternally grateful. It makes it possible for us to do our work each and every day and to make progress on a number of projects. I wanted you to know that we had a very, very good 2014 and if you had a chance to look through our report, I gave a few more details there. We saw a 7 percent increase in attendance in 2014 over 2013 and we think perhaps due to two factors. One, we more actively went after, this will sound bad, schoolchildren, but we courted more teachers specifically to bring their classes in to help them understand how we can serve their curriculum, in particular in history. And then also our WWII exhibit, because it was up for two years, teachers could plan in advance, they could plan to build a visit to the museum into their curriculum and they found that very, very useful. So we're planning to make the next exhibit also a two-year exhibit and it will be on And then this year, we actually doubled the number of children served because all Morehead 4th graders were brought into the museum. So we had over 1,200 children go through the museum just in the month of May. And they came, they saw not only the ship in the church, the WWII exhibit, 1968 exhibit, and then the archives. They got a chance to visit with Mark Peal, which is always an interesting visit, as you know, Mark is fascinating to listen to, but also to be able to light the fire under some children who know nothing about the fact that we keep and preserve their history and that they can come and look up information about their families or anything that they're curious about, they can come and look it up and Mark will help them look it up. So, we always get a couple historians out of those kinds of visits, so we're excited about that. Kids came as far away as St. Paul for their school visits this May. The big changes in 2014 were the opening of the WWII exhibit, we also had a new marketing coordinator, a new events and exhibit coordinator and a new administrative assistant. And having new folks in on the staff definitely brings new energy and life to the staff who've been around for awhile. Just in FYI, Mark Peal will be celebrating his 30th year with the Historical Society next January, so I'd say we were gonna have a surprise party, but he would never allow that, so.
So just let everybody know right away?
Yeah, yeah, that's what I'm gonna do. We also had 12 different exhibits moving through the museum and that's more than our usual eight. We just had opportunities to bring in a couple more exhibits for a shorter period of time. We did get some new computers through grants as well. Our oldest is from 2005 and yes, it's still going, but it groans every morning when we turn it on. So are there any questions about the printed annual report, anything that you'd like to ask about? I was just going to point out a couple of things about 2015 before I went on. So doing our part, the WWII exhibit is up through December 31st. If you have not seen it yet, please come by, please get a chance to see that. Right now, 1968 is up through June 21st and then we'll have Minnesota fur trade in after the Midwest Viking Festival, so through July, August, we'll have focusing on Minnesota fur trade. And then after that, Norwegian immigration to Minnesota. These are traveling exhibits that we bring in, that we rent and bring in. Our biggest project this year is cataloging the entire archive. We got a very large grant from the Minnesota Historical Society to hire a project archivist and he has come in and begun the long process of converting everything into the past perfect software and then also beginning the process of putting our archives online. It's long been Mark's dream to make the archives accessible to people all over the world because he gets questions and research inquiries from all over the world. So we've begun that process with the support of the Historical Society and for that, we're very excited and grateful. He'll be with us for the next year. We'll have art exhibits, we have our three festivals coming up, German Culture Day, Scandinavian Festival, of course, June 26th and 27th, German Culture Day, September 19th, and Pangaea on November 14th. And then we'll be doing a number of special events and another big initiative for us is ADA accessibility. We've had our eyes open to the fact that although we've always been wheelchair accessible at the MCOP Center, certainly our museum exhibits have never been accessible to people who are blind or deaf. And so we are working in particular on those audience members and working, we just recently got a grant to hire a consultant who is blind and she is really helping us to learn and moving us forward in those areas, so. From my perspective, it's all good news.
Yeah, a lot of good news, a lot of great work. Looks like you've got a lot of volunteers too that help out.
We do, we do. Truly, we calculated at, you know, something like $35,000 worth, it's another staff person basically in volunteer time in terms of the regulars, the weekly regulars. And some folks have been there for the 30 years the building has been open.
Very impressive report.
Thank you.
One of my appointments is the Historical and Cultural Society, so from the board, I just want to thank you for all the work that you do. You really go above and beyond your job description and if you haven't had a chance to go over there during the day, it's really busy because the gift, or the new snack shack, if you can stop by for lunch, it's good and there's a lot of people around, so thank you for what you do.
You bet. You don't have to cross the road or tracks for lunch.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Dave, come on up. Approval of conveyance in county right-of-way along County State 8 Highway 31 in Holly. Nathan again for backup today, that's good.
Nathan did all the legwork on this, as well as he worked with Jenny, Attorney's Office, just to make sure we had all our ducts in a row, but it was maybe about three weeks ago or so, I think? We got a request from business in Holly and they wanted to do a new, little upgrading to their existing sign. Did anybody get a picture of the location? And what we found out as we went out to take a look at it, to see where our right-of-way stood with regard to the sign in the building, the very back of the sign on the right-hand side of the picture, that's roughly about the 60-foot of existing right-of-way. So the entire sign and that pad and everything is all within our ditch right-of-way.
It is, huh?
Not really impacting us, but nonetheless, it is in the right-of-way. And we ran into this case most recently down in Barnesville when we did our street project down there. We found several buildings and garages were within the old Trump Highway right-of-way that was converted to County 52 back in 1978 or whatever it was. And what we did there is we did quitclaim deeds for just the portion that, you know, to get stuff out of the right-of-way. That's what we'd recommend we do here as well. I don't think it'd impact us, you can see there's plenty enough room for drainage. It does allow them then to tear the sign down and put up kind of an elevated sign that they wish to do. We got some value from the assessor's office and the amount that we would want to convey back to them, I think is 10 feet by 137 feet, so it's only .041 acres, it's a very small amount. And then the valuation of 13,790 that we got from Nancy would be total offering from them to us of 565.39. As well as there's a little bit of staff time, you know, it's, we thought, I think it's maybe four and a half hours max. So far from what Nathan tells me, that business doesn't have any issue with it, they're pretty happy to move forward rather than to be told, no one, figure another way to do it.
That property on the north side, that old business, I don't know if it's got anything in now, but it looks as though their parking lot has the same issue encroaching under the ditch. Is that something that you'll see a conflict later on?
I guess it depends on what they want to put in there. That's the old John Deere dealership.
Right.
It's all gravel, Eric, looks like it is.
Yeah.
It's just gravel.
Yeah. If they wish to put something in there, hopefully we get the same request before it's done. Sometimes we don't get these requests, we find out after the fact.
Well, how can they even get a permit to do it?
Well, sometimes they just do that stuff, you know, like even the sign itself, we were talking, you know, and the, you know, I just wonder how that got put in with the previous engineer. He was very strict about right-of-ways and things and I think it just got.
But isn't the city limits in Holly, wouldn't they have to go through?
It is and it does have to go through their planning and zoning authority, but they don't verify right-of-way at the planning and zoning level in cities when people bring in new building requests. That's what the city of Barnesville told us when we were down there working on theirs. JNS Mills was actually allowed to do a very large expansion, like a half million dollar expansion, and they did it on county right-of-way without verification from the city.
That's odd that they wouldn't check for.
A little bit of a disconnect and we asked about that, didn't we? We asked if they get a request on our roadways in the future, that there'd be some communication so that we could then verify the right-of-ways and that's kind of what happened here in Holly, right?
Yep, that's what we found out.
Yeah, we got a call from the city clerk there and we went out and checked it out and found this.
Well, Dave, I don't, you know, I don't have a problem with doing this. The only thing that, you know, I think ultimately we need to look out for and be responsible for would be, I'd rather give the quitclaim to them and take the liability off of in case a car went off the road and hit their sign.
True.
And it wouldn't be ours anyway and it wouldn't be on our land, but who knows what 20 years might bring and if that road would ever need to be widened, but I'm assuming if that happened, you'd probably end up having to go to curb and gutter anyway instead of a ditch system, right?
Correct.
So, so at that point, the ditch would be, and we wouldn't, we still wouldn't need that much more in right-of-way to do that.
Yeah, and the building is another 10 feet away, so we're kind of pinched there with the dimensions of that, the location of that building as well.
But, but from the standpoint of, in the future, if we ever had to widen that road, it would almost force us then to do curb and gutter, wouldn't it?
I think so.
Well, I mean, but, but it would be an option to us.
Yeah.
And to the city.
Correct.
Joint project.
Okay. The board's wishes on this?
I don't know if they approve.
I'll second.
Motion in a second, any further discussion? Hearing on, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All the same side, motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen.
Dave, I, I am still repeatedly getting questions regarding the intersection of three and 22.
Sure, we've gotten some quotes on that, maybe I'll let Nathan give the specifics on that, where we're at.
You know what I'm talking about, just right in the middle of that intersection, every car is driving around it.
We got, we did get quotes, the low quote with Central Specialties who's doing our work on 18.
Okay.
They're gonna come in, they're looking at the middle to the end of next week to mill that out and redo it.
Okay.
When we get closer to the timeframe, we'll put out a press release to let everybody know that it's coming.
So will they have to just close that intersection then or how?
We will, yeah, we'll have to close it. It's not gonna be a long-term closure. We should have it done in a couple of days, so.
Okay. We think we were thinking about trying to route them maybe on 96 and around a little bit.
Just go up to 93 and then over to 75?
That's how you.
We've kind of got two detours, because we've got east, west, and north-south that we'll have to detour around.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, I just, yeah, we want to make sure there's ample warning. And it's a good thing you're doing it after the school bus routes are done.
Yeah.
Good, all right, that's, that's good to hear. So did that, did it come in with what you thought price-wise or?
It was reasonable, you know, I guess I would compare it very similar to when we do bridge replacements with box culverts. It was like $23,000, so very similar. The problem they were having was obtaining a good price for milling, you know, milling an intersection like that is.
Not very big.
Not very big, so that costs a little bit more than what we had probably hold.
Well, the people that use that most appreciate it and there's a lot of cars that use 22.
That's right.
Thousands a day.
Yeah, I think you're right, close to about five, about 5,000, isn't it?
Yeah.
All right, good, thank you. Thank you. Okay, we're already at committee reports. Short meeting today, Wayne.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On Thursday, May 28th, I had Family Healthcare, General Business, and we had a presentation on the different kinds of diagnostic tests that are done by Family Healthcare. This includes blood tests and x-rays among other things. These are quite sophisticated and several are sent on to the Mayo Clinic for even more sophisticated results. Financial presentation on the budget, they went over the grant revenue and different kinds of reimbursement for services provided. Treasurers' report, operations report, and then the CEOs' report. And all is going very well at Family Healthcare. That's all I have this week.
Thank you. Frank?
Saturday, which just did involve the county, because they went out to breakfast on the farm there at Holly, they had a very good turnout again, you know. Started out slow, but boy, come around 8:30, they started pouring in there like, I didn't think they were gonna quit. Looked like they were coming in by the busloads, but it was a good turnout there. Last night, I went to Felt and City Council Meeting, they're working on their lagoons up there, they're putting in some new lagoons, you know, taking out an old one there. They're still concerned about, they got some water on the other side of Highway 9 there and they'd like to get that, a culvert in there, but the watershed board feels like not doing it, but I'll approach the watershed board again and see if they can get that culvert in. From there, I went to Yulin Township, they had their monthly meeting. Talked about road maintenance and they're very satisfied, they have a contract with one of, one of the contractors and they're very satisfied with their work. A little bit of discussion on, should we do that with all the townships, you know, you know, SORIS, could the county save money by everybody going with a private contractor? I don't know if we ever want to look at that or not, you know, I know Clay County's probably one of the few counties that still does it the other way, but I don't know if that's something you want to look at or not, but they're happy with what they have, you know. Also, we discussed the jail and they're very, they're very receptive, I mean, there was a good, I mean, they, I think they realized we need the new jail and stuff like that and after discussing it with them, you know, they were very receptive to what we're doing and stuff like that, so that was good discussion there. I guess that was it for me.
Jenny?
Last week, I had a meeting at the Buffalo Red River Watershed to talk about the Whiskey Creek. There's an issue with flooding on the south branch of the Buffalo and when the Whiskey Creek comes into it and they've talked about it for a few years, about the ability to clean out the sediment that has settled in there and, and I guess it's basically still at community involvement, or community input, they're just not quite sure where they need to go and something needs to be done because the flooding out there is, used to happen 48 hours after a rain and now it happens within 24 hours of a rain. So they're just trying to figure out what's, what's best and there's some, clearly some concerns from farmers as to how that will impact them. Yesterday, I had the Joint Facilities Task Force meeting, Commissioner Campbell and I were there. I just feel that, that those meetings are good to have a dialogue between the city and the, and the schools as we move forward on our, on our major infrastructure projects. I guess nothing too large came out of that meeting, maybe Commissioner Campbell can expand on that a little bit, but that concludes my reports.
Thank you. Kevin?
Okay, we did have a jail construction meeting last Tuesday afternoon after our board meeting and we're kind of going at this from several fronts. One is the focusing on the jail itself and the wanting to move forward with designing, upgrading the design process of, of the new jail. Another component, and then of course, then another component then is where do we put the law enforcement center and how do we make all this stuff fit? And we, as it's been reported in the media and as we've talked about here in our board meeting, we've talked about reaching out to our neighbors to the north of us here, north of the campus. And we brought that information to the committee and the committee, which has a lot of public people and business people on it, suggested that we should reach out to the entire two-block area, one, each block to the.
From 11th to 9th?
Yes, yes, from 9th to 11th Street. And just to reach out to all of them and just tell them that we're, you know, we're considering expansion of the campus and are they interested? And I think, I think our board chair is, if he hasn't already, I think you're intending to send a letter to them in that regard and offering them to sit down on a one-on-one basis and go over what we're thinking and, and that's, that's a good thing. And that, that actually was our committee that actually, because before, we had talked about just doing the southern half of each of those blocks. And it was the committee that said, looking long-term, out for the next 50 or 60 years, shouldn't we be just really looking at the whole thing? So, so that was that and then, then our finance, we called our finance committee meeting together to talk about, okay, well, how, if all of these people were to be interested in this, how, how do we go about, where does the funds come from? And in talking with our committee, we believe that this would still be part of the overall construction costs of the new facility, but in the short term, we could look at our reserves to make those buyouts beforehand if, if that's how we chose to go. So we feel comfortable there. Then, and that's kind of on the jail issue. Then we had the Lakes and Prairies meeting last Wednesday morning, both Grant and I were there and I had some other things that I was dealing with, so Grant actually sat up and as the alternate and I was in the back of the room, because I had to leave a couple times, I was dealing with something with my family in Minneapolis that I had to be on the phone for. But primarily, there's, there still is this issue on the original, there's, there's the original design of part of the new burner, it's not up to standards compared to what we thought it would be in terms of its ability to generate steam. So we are going into a mitigation process on that now with the contractors and I think the board established our grounds on what we wanted done and what we expected. And so we'll see how that mitigation goes. I think that's coming up, Kirk, is it the 28th of June? Yeah. Yeah, so hopefully, hopefully we'll get that resolved and that can move on. I did want, and I'm kind of glad Kirk that you're here this morning, because there was another, another issue on this whole partnership that we have with them that for the second month in a row now, I've, I've seen where Clay County is being below and there's starting to be a little bit of concern on the part of the group that we're not sending enough garbage compared to what we had said we would send them. So, so Kirk, I think we need to, and I know you're working on it, and I know that Steve's got some issues, the city moor's got some issues, but I really think that maybe you should sit down with Grant and I and maybe we can get Steve to come over.
I'm meeting with Steve today if you have time, 1:30.
Okay, well, it might not, I'd like to try to make that because I don't, I don't know if it's a, what it is, if it's a labor issue on our part, but if we're gonna agree to go into something and we're gonna, we agreed to send certain amount of stuff to someplace, we should be holding up our end of the deal. And to this day, we're not. And so we need to, we need to fix that. And then we did have the joint meeting as Jenny talked about and I also gave them the update, this is kind of what I gave here this morning on, on what has transpired with our jail needs. We did ask the school district if they could reply to us if, if they have any interest or not in the potential of acquiring some of the land where Washington, George Washington School was, just two blocks to the east here, as an alternative site for a law enforcement center should this not work out to the north. And for now, I think what they're gonna go to, they're gonna just try to get a consensus, would they even be willing to or not? We didn't ask them, will you sell it to us or will you not sell it to us? Is there, maybe they don't even want it. And so what I was telling them, if, if you don't want to sell it, just let us know that now so we can take it off the table. So, so they're gonna do that for us, I think coming up in the next month. Jenny, I think that covered it, didn't it? Yeah, that's all I've got.
Okay, I had the jail meeting, I think Kevin went over that pretty well, the lakes and prairies, those legal issues we're dealing with, hopefully we've got mediation the end of the month and, and some of that will at least has a chance of being resolved. Let's see, I had Minnesota Rural Counties Board, because we had a meeting Friday because of the legislature's inaction on getting a transportation bill and we're hoping that, you know, something's going to happen with that yet, so there's still, we're still holding out hope and a lot of contact being made with legislature and people that are involved trying to get something still before it's too late for the year, so. And let's see, I think that was it for me. Brian?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Had the correctional facility meeting, really nothing to add on that, it's, and I think, I know I keep reminding people or the media that talks to me is that these are options that are being explored, options that are being explored, options that are being explored. Note that the board has not made any decisions, meaning you, as to what is going to take place, that this is just all inquiries and designs for you to consider, so I think that's, that's so important that, because they say, oh, it's going here, no, it's not going here, that, that's, that's an option. I had some contact reference the, some property that had been purchased by the diversion down in the southern part of the county. In fact, we met out there a week ago, I guess it was, or something like that, to discuss some options on that. We put it back in the hands of the diversion to, to figure out a solution for cleanup. We had a conference call, a diversion conference call, reference the PPP, that's the Public Private Partnership and how that is advancing in, in Washington and the strategy that is being approached and, and the interest that is being shown by the OMB, Office of Management and Budget and, and just some strategies to how that is progressing and, and how funding is gonna take place.